Hello and welcome to the debate of the Battleground School District Candidates, hosted by COO.com and I Believe in Battleground Schools. I am Peter Van Nordrick, Clark County Assessor, and a citizen of the Battleground School District.
And I'm Stephanie Edelain, an 8th grade teacher at Tufts Valley Middle, and a parent and resident within the Battleground School District. With the recent passage of the levy and the leaving of the superintendent, the Battleground School Board has garnered much attention.
With the Board has drawn much attention and criticism, after the next election, two of the five members of the Board will be new, and they're looking forward to setting a new direction for the Board and rebuilding the trust of the Battleground community.
At this time, I would like to introduce the candidates. Running unopposed in District 5, to my right is Stephanie McClintock. Also to my right, running unopposed for reelection in District 1 is Monty Anderson. To my left, running in District 3, the only contested race, is Mitch Taylor and Jim Peguero.
Thank you Stephanie and Oliver Candidates. Each candidate will have one minute to give an opening statement. Then the candidates will each have one minute to answer the questions rotating who starts. The candidates have been provided the questions ahead of time, with ample time to research and prepare. Monty Anderson, could you please give your opening statement?
Hello, my name is Monty Anderson, running for District number 1. As you heard, I'm running unopposed, and this will be for my second term. I am a father of five boys, three that have been through the Battleground School District, and two that are still currently at Battleground High School. I also have three grandchildren that live in the state of Wyoming, and I dearly miss them much. I do have lots of goals and ambitions for this new upcoming Board.
Are you finished? Mitch Taylor, would you like to go next?
Sure, my name's Mitch Taylor. I moved here from Salt Lake City, Utah, 17 years ago. And one of the reasons we moved where we did was because of the schools. We wanted to move to the Vancouver area, as that's where employment was. And as we were looking around, we saw that Battleground School District was very positive with their test results. The feedback from the people that were in the area was very positive about the schools. And it was one of the primary decisions of why we moved to Battleground. I have three children, all three which have graduated from Battleground High School and attended all Battleground School District schools, primary and middle schools. I have two grandchildren that live in Battleground School District as they get older. Looking forward to having them be in a school district that was enticing to us as it will be to them. I enjoy sports, I enjoy volunteering, I enjoy working with kids, and very glad that I could be a part of this discussion.
Thank you.
Jim Peguero, would you like to go next, please?
I'm Jim Peguero, running for School Director of Battleground School District, Position number 3. I've been a resident of the Battleground and Clark County area for 50 years. My wife, our five children, and myself are all graduates of Battleground High School. And I will have a granddaughter that will be starting in the Battleground School District now this year.
Finally, Stephanie McClintock.
Hi, my name is Stephanie McClintock, and I'm running for Battleground School District's Position 5. I've been a resident of this community for 15 years now. And my husband and I have a 7th grader and a 5th grader entering Battleground Schools this year, tomorrow. I have a Bachelor's Degree in Business, and I've spent over 10 years working in Human Resources. I also have worked at a local private school for three years. And I think with that combination, I can bring a fresh perspective to the Board. Making fiscally responsible decisions and being accountable to taxpayers is very important to me, and the needs of the classroom will be my top priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
The first question will go to Mitch Taylor. And the question is, what qualities and skills do you believe you will bring to the School Board?
One of the primary things is leadership. At work, my title is Vice President of Client Services. I manage the people there in the office that deal with training, customer service, custom programming, and implementation. Part of that is we have clientele that we are responsible for making sure that they're happy with the software that we provide. And they too are people that I have a responsibility for. I've been a coach, I've coached everywhere from 6-year-olds up to 15-year-olds. I'm a youth group leader, working with 12-year-olds to 18-year-olds. Some of the qualities I think I have is I'm thick-skinned. My son-in-law asked me if I was ready to be hated, and I said yes. I also have a sense of humor, I like to listen, I desire to do what's right, and willing to put forth the effort. I have integrity, I'm a communicator, and I have no hidden agenda. I have nothing more than just helping out our school district.
Alright, thank you.
Jim, what qualities and skills do you believe you will bring to the School Board?
Well, I believe I'll bring the listening and analyzing of the decisions and the comments and input from the people of Battleground. And I would base my decisions on the moral and ethical convictions that I have. Thank you.
Stephanie.
Well, I talked a little bit about my experience at a private school. For three years, I worked from the lunch lady to the recess lady, teacher's aide, to assisting the superintendent in marketing and retention. As far as my human resource background, spent a lot of time in recruiting, so the hiring of a new superintendent is particularly exciting to me. And then I've also spent time, as far as in the community, I coached soccer currently for both my boys. My husband has been a baseball coach at Glenwood for years. And I think another good background I have is that I have refereed soccer, so those refereeing skills might come in handy here. Thank you.
Finally, Monty, what qualities and skills do you believe you'll bring?
Well, I think that I've already brought most of them skills to the Board previously. And some may agree and some may not agree with some of the things that have happened on the current Board. But I'm a good listener, and I believe that people can see that. And when input is asked, I'll give the input. And I like to hear all the different sides of the issues before a decision is made. Also, as most that know me know that I don't have any personal agenda. But the mission statement of our school district is preparing our children to succeed in the next steps of their lives. And I think that that is what we all need to remember. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. The second question, we'll start with Jim. Why do you want to be on the School Board?
Well, I believe it takes a lot of effort and time to be on the School Board. And when I was raising my family, I didn't have the time to devote. So I feel that now that I will be able to have that time and will be able to devote it to issues and incidents on the School Board that come up.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Well, I'm invested in this school district because of my sons, one at Pleasant Valley Middle and one at CAM. But I'm always volunteered and always been a big part of my kids' life. The reason I got the job at the school that I did is because I was pretty much there volunteering all the time anyway, so they went ahead and put me on the books. But I want to see my kids get a really good education, the best. And I want the best for all the kids in this community so they can have successful and happy lives.
Thank you.
Well, as it was four years ago, I was asked by some very close friends of mine to run for the Board. There was a lot of infighting that was going on, and they didn't like that. And then when my term was up, they had asked and encouraged me to run again. I was debating whether or not I would or not. And I think that that encouragement has been good for me and also good for the Battleground School District. And I believe that things are heading in the right direction. And I look forward to having a good team to help move this district forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitch?
Thank you. Similar to Monty, over the last five, seven years, as I worked with Battleground High School with their athletic program, a lot of people came up to me and said, "Boy, you've got the skills, you're needed in our School Board." And so that's when I started to look into what it took to be on the School Board. Attended meetings with my daughter, kind of asked around, talked to people, talked to teachers, talked to administrators. I've talked to the people that are on the Board, finding out what it takes, giving them some of kind of what my ideas were. And then realized that maybe, yes, this is something that I could do to help our school district. My family's all grown up, it's just my wife and I, they're at home. They don't have those responsibilities other than making sure we spoil the grandchildren. I've always been a volunteer, I volunteer with bands and sports and school. I play Santa at Maple Grove Primary School. And I think that now is the time for me to step into that realm.
Thank you Mitch.
The next question, excuse me, we'll begin with Stephanie. In the wake of the Dr. Brea buyout, how do you feel the Board can rebuild public confidence?
Well, open and honest communication, following the rules of a Board meeting. So maybe some training in that area, maybe providing legal counsel at meetings until the Board is comfortable knowing the rules of the meetings and how they should be conducted. I think some ongoing communication of just what's going on in the district, like monthly updates. And I guess keeping the hiring of the superintendent, keeping the community informed of every step that we're taking and things like that are going to be going on at the regular Board meetings from here on forward.
Thank you. Monty?
Well, first off, I would like to thank the community for their support and encourage them to be patient with us. I also envision, as Stephanie had mentioned, starting with the superintendent search. And having that as many public forums as we need on that. And then, but not just stopping there, but also going throughout the year with the public forums. Some of the things I would like to do would be to have some committees formed for the district and the Board. And those committees would be such like the Finance Committee, Facilities and Technology Committees, and also a Curriculum Committee. And by having these committees and public hearings, the community will be more involved. Thank you.
Mitch?
Well, right now, it's a very open wound, and there's a lot of pain that's involved with this. And it's not something that's going to come really swift. It's not a short-term, simple task, there needs to be some healing. But the bright point is, is I think that there's hope. I mean, we see what the school district's been before. Overall, the school district's in a good position. Like's been mentioned before, there needs to be openness, there needs to be availability so the people can voice their feelings and their opinions, and so they can be heard. Which means the School Board needs to get out to the people and not just have the people come to the School Board. There definitely needs to be transparency. There needs to be as much information given out to the public as possible, through the press, through the schools. There needs, one of the key things is, as the new superintendent is hired, the involvement of the public in helping us make that decision will be a key.
Finally, Jim?
Yes, it's going to take the trust of the community a long time to gain that back. And I believe that through meetings and communication and being forthright in the decisions, that we can gain that trust back. But it's going to take time to do that.
Let's start with you, Monty. How do you feel a School Board can include more of the community in the decision-making process?
Well, like I mentioned before, that I think that it needs to start with this superintendent search for the decision-making process. And as far as the superintendent goes, I think that we need to be able to hear what the public wants in the superintendent. And then use that to go forward and search for a superintendent. And then, as we come down to the last three selections items, have them give questions and answers, and that feedback can come back to the Board on what type of superintendent or which candidate would be the best in their opinion.
Alright, thank you. Mitch?
There needs to be stakeholder input. It takes a village to raise a child. There's the district, there's the admins, there's the teachers, there's the public that need to help in making not just the decision for the superintendent, but a lot of the decisions moving forward with the budget, with curriculum, and how things are laid out. Agreed with Monty that there needs to be focus groups, there needs to be committees and subcommittees to help that move forward. Community meetings, the Board needs to go to the public and not, once again, have the public come to the Board. They need to be available. They need to attend PTAs and PTOs, come early, stay after so they can listen to the public. They need to go to sporting events, to plays, to the art displays, the shows, the concerts. And to make themselves available to the public and stay and listen to hear what they have to say. And helping gather that whole conglomerate of information to help them make the decisions.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, I believe that we need the input of the community and the parents. And that input should come in a way that it should be possibly in work sessions and other meetings and contact with the School Board members. And we also can maybe receive some of that information through emails and the mail and even phone calls, and that would be appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, the next question starts with you Mitch. The question is, are you willing to roll back the levy if the state provides more funding?
Stephanie?
Oh, sorry, wrong Stephanie.
I get a turn. Okay, so how do I feel a School Board can include more of the community in the decision-making process? Well, I think one step has already been made by setting a new School Board calendar for this next calendar year. I was fortunate to be a part of that, of setting that calendar. And we're going to have consistent meetings, 2nd and 4th Monday. One of those meetings will be at 6:30 for working parents, and the other will be at 4:30 to help accommodate the school staff and admin. So I think that's, we're in this, you know, on our first step in the right direction doing that. In the past, I don't think that the times were conducive to working parents attending these meetings. I also think that making sure that these superintendent interviews are done at our Board meetings and informing the public of the agenda of each of our Board meetings will be important. So the option is there, you just need to show up and be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think I know what's coming.
Are you willing to roll back the levy if the state provides more funding?
100% yes. You know, the levy money is the public money entrusted to the school district to help fund the schools and to get an education for our children. If the funding comes from someplace else, there's no reason for us to keep levy money if it comes from the state or, you know, even private donations. The levy money's not needed. I think the school district made a mistake a few years ago when they had the opportunity to give money back, and they decided to spend it elsewhere. I think it's not the district's money all the time. If there's funding, give the money back to the people.
Jim?
Well, I believe that if the state receives additional or increased funding money, levy money, that we should be able to roll back that levy. But it's important to take as much of the tax burden off the people as possible.
Stephanie?
Yes, I would roll back the levy if the state provided more funding. If we could run without that levy dollars, that would be great. I think would also renew the public's faith in this district's ability to run the school district. I'm also committed to living within our means, just like I do at home. Thank you.
Monty?
And, yeah, if it's possible, I think that the levy money should be rolled back. If the state pitches in where they need to, and where they have been lacking in the past, I think we could be able to do that. The state has always had, or has been working in the last 20-some years on placing that burden on the shoulders of the local taxpayers, and I think that that's wrong. But they are working on changing that. But they have been putting some stipulations on the funds that are coming in, which makes it a little bit more impossible to roll back the money. But I think we should definitely try it if we can.
Thank you. The next question goes to Jim. What attributes do you feel are important for a superintendent?
Well, I believe that the most important is probably having outstanding and excellent leadership skills. But this person, whether it would be he or she, they also need to have real good communication skills. They need to be available to the community, to the teachers, to the other employees, and to the students.
Thank you. Stephanie?
I think it's important to have a mix of someone with some business background and education background. A superintendent is like a CEO of a company. So if you've got a strong CEO that's maybe strong in a business sense, they can put around them other people that hire on other people that are strong in other sense. So an assistant superintendent, for instance, could be really strong in education. I think we need that mix there at the district. I would like to see a superintendent that displays a strong sense of duty, excellent communication, and is visible in the schools, with the parents, with the kids, and with the administrative staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Monty?
Well, I don't know if I can add much more to what Jim and Stephanie had said. Like Stephanie had mentioned, that the superintendent, I believe, is the CEO of the corporation, and they set the tone. They also, like was mentioned, they need to have clear vision and effective communication. They've got to be a good listener, a great leader. I think that's probably one of the most important qualities that they have to have, as well as available to the public. And they must be able to take a stand. They need to be able to listen to what people have to say, but also take a stand in their positions and why they are taking that stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitch?
You know, being last on this one, you get to hear everything that you agree with. I mean, if you could create that person that had all those skills, you've got the perfect superintendent. Something that I would add is somebody who's not afraid to take risks and make a commitment. Now, not a risk that would put anything in jeopardy, but willing to come up with an idea or an ideal, set a goal, and work together with the district to achieve that goal. Somebody who needs to be flexible and not just hard-set in the way that they think and the way that things need to be done, as they listen to the public, as they listen to the admins and the teachers. I also think this superintendent needs to be instructive, like a leader, attending the teacher trainings and helping to give their point of views and part of the training. Help the directors to direct in teaching the teachers. As we've got new programs, the state has changes all the time, and new programs need to be implemented, and they need to be involved.
Okay, next question. Stephanie, how do you feel the public should be involved in the selection process for superintendent?
Well, I think we're currently on the right path. The Board is going to be setting a meeting, I believe, September. One of the regularly scheduled Board meetings is September. We'll be hearing from some search firms doing their pitch. And then we're going to be asking for public feedback on which search firm to select. So, starting from the very beginning of the recruiting process, we're inviting the public to join us and help us with that decision. Other ways, you can let the district know, you can go on the website. And there's information on who to contact if you want to, you know, tell the district what you'd like to see in your next superintendent. And I think just attending our regularly scheduled Board meetings, we're going to be discussing this at every Board meeting from here probably through, and most of the school year this year, so.
Thank you Stephanie.
Thank you.
Monty?
Yeah, I don't know if I think much different than what Stephanie had just said. And I had mentioned earlier, when we were talking about how to get the community involved. But I believe that they will be involved, and it's important that they are because it is their district. And the superintendent is going to be running their district, and we need to know what they think and what they want in a superintendent so we can make the best selection for the Battleground School District.
Mitch?
Once again, we'll agree with the people to our right as they have come up with the perfect ideals. And add to it maybe an internet site that allows for public feedback to give their opinion. Something that people can do from their homes during their own time. They don't have to hunt anybody out, but they can give their opinions of what they're looking for or how they feel about a specific person or some of their ideas. And then, once again, have community meetings to go around to different areas in helping them understand where the process is, who the people are, what they represent, and allow them to give their input then.
Jim?
Well, I don't have really anything additional to add. We do definitely need the input from the organizations, the community, and also from the outlying areas that sometimes feel that they are not involved in the different processes.
The next question goes to you, Monty. Sorry, it's with you. How can the district improve?
Well, to start with, I think that there are a lot of good things that are happening in the Battleground School District. But we could improve. And for anybody to say that we can't improve, then we're going to look at the insides. But one of the ways that they can start to improve is by sharing those ideas that are going good at the other schools with each other and from grade to grade. And I know that that is happening, but we just need to do more of it. Which, of course, takes more money, but we'll get through that hurdle. Then also, we started tearing down some of the old buildings that we have, that we had had, and we need to continue down that path. And by doing that, we can prove to the public that we care about our facilities and our children. Then lastly, I think that one of the areas that schools can always improve, particularly Battleground, is in the area of technology. It always seems like we're falling behind in the technology arena.
Thank you. Mitch?
I agree with Monty 100% with Battleground School District is a great school district. We need to take what's there and make it better. A status quo is not progress. So we need to identify the good pieces, have that be the foundation, and grow from there. I think we need better communication in talking to, from the district to the admins, from the district to the teachers, from the admins to the teachers. And as I mentioned before, it takes a village to raise a child. Part of that unity needs to also come from the staff, it needs to come from the public, and it needs to come from the local government. And communication is the key. Needs to be a little bit more transparency. The executive meetings, there's a need for that. Sometimes governments will hide behind that, not just the school district, but they'll hide behind the executive meeting so they know that they don't have to share that information out to the public. And then also availability. Public meetings- And then also availability, public meetings, visiting the PTOs and attending school functions.
Thanks, Mitch. Jim?
I think one of the things that the public likes to see is the appearance. I think we need to improve on the appearance of the, of the buildings in the district. So far, we, as some have noticed maybe, that we've already done some of that. The other thing is from the education side is the test scores have come up, but maybe we can work on and improve in them further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next question.
Oh, did I do it again?
Stephanie?
Thank you. Well, a lot of my ideas have already been said by my counterparts here. The only thing I would like to add is I think would be, I would like to put the idea out there of doing a survey of our customers. Our customers are parents and teachers and admin, along with the kids. It would be interesting to hear their feedback on what they would do if they had a magic wand, what would they do to make some improvements in our school? So, someone new coming on to the school board, I would like to know what our customers think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mitch, what is your view of education?
Education is the A number-one factor in success and growth in a community. As the children learn and develop, the community then grows because what's being put out to, into the public from our schools is a stronger citizen, a more knowledgeable citizen, and a smarter citizen. We have to realize that education is one of the largest employers in the areas, and that's who's going to the grocery stores, and that's who's spending the money to help the, the growth. So, education in all aspects is what helps our cities, communities, and areas be successful and grow.
Jim?
I believe the students should have the resources to become responsible citizens in the community. And the resources should be the excellent teachers, the materials, along with the, the facilities.
Stephanie?
I believe it is a school's responsibility to teach a child what they need to know to provide for themselves in their adult life. Thank you.
Monty?
Well, I believe that education is more important today than it was 100 years ago. But not everybody is, wants to go to school to be, to become doctors and lawyers. They also want to go to school to become technicians and, and workers. But I also believe that education starts at home, and sometimes some of those things should stay at home. If a child can learn to become an active member of society, then we have accomplished something. When people ask me sometimes, how come our school system is failing? I always ask them a question back and say, what school system, what other school system in the world produces more entrepreneurs than our system? Based on that, I don't believe that our school systems are failing. I believe that we are accomplishing much. Thank you.
Want me to go again?
What should the role of school district be in the community?
Well, I think the role should be a partnership with the community, and this would be a benefit to the education of the children. Some of these could be a community, where you could be of an asset to the community by partnering with different things that would help the district clean up, helping children at a younger age.
Stephanie?
I believe the role should be to partner with parents, with local businesses, in the education of the kids. So, like what Monty said last about family being really important, and there is some role that parents need to take responsibility for in teaching their child. I don't think it is a teacher's job to have to teach discipline in the classroom. I think that needs to be taught at home. I also think that looking at local businesses and asking them what do they need, high school graduates, what kind of skills do they, would they like to see how school, local high school graduates have, so they can go out into the workforce, because not every child is going to go on to college. So I think working in a partnership with some local businesses in that aspect would be beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Monty?
Well, it, the district can do a lot, but I think that it starts with that the school district is, not that one wants to draw sides, but they're like on one side, and the board and the community is on the other side. And the district needs to take direction from the board and the community. And by having some of these community meetings, such like Jim and Stephanie had mentioned on this partnering, we can partner, partner together then with the district, and they're the ones that are the experts in the, and have the skills in the teaching. And through that partnering, we can provide a quality education for our children. Thank you.
Mitch?
Like Stephanie and Monty said, the district needs to help the parents understand that education comes from the home, then to the school, and not from the school to the home. There's a lot of things to be learned as far as how things are learned, homework, when it needs to be done, from the parents. And so, the schools, the district can help with that. Another thing I think, along with everything that's said, it's interesting how the school district is, kind of coordinates, like for battleground, the, the arts. You know, I can go see a play, I can go to a concert. I don't have to go to Vancouver, I don't have to go to Portland to enjoy the arts. Same thing with sporting events. I don't have to go see the Portland Trail Blazers, I can go see the Prairie Falcons basketball team, or I can see the Battleground Tigers play basketball. And it's interesting how a good team can almost rally a community into feeling.
Thank you.
Stephanie, the next question is for you. What are the pros and cons of Common Core?
Well, in the working world, question, answers to questions are either right or wrong. So I think teaching kids otherwise is not setting realistic expectations for them for their future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Monty?
Well, sometimes I wonder why one would base failing on a test. It should be based upon the accomplishments. And sometimes in the Common Core, it, a pro of it would be that it gives the community and the policymakers an idea of where each school would stand, but it doesn't take into the nuances of the, of the situations. And then sometimes some of the schools will teach to those standards so that they look better, and it's a, becomes a beauty contest and not an educational process. Thank you.
Mitch?
You know, I did my homework on, on Common Core. It was interesting because as I was reading the pros and I was reading of cons, and I was just reading of, of just what it was, that a lot of the pros are also cons, and some of the cons are pros. My father was a professor at Carter State University, and he had a book. He brought it home, he opened it up to us, and on one page it said, "Why eggs are good for us." And the study showed, hey, these are the reasons that eggs are good for us. And on the very next page it said, "Why eggs aren't good for us," and explained that. And some of the things they said were good, these people said that were bad. I think part of it has to be with that we need to take a good, solid look and see if it benefits our school district if we want to get involved with, with the Common Core. Our children are unique, and we want to just have them one size fit all. What's good in New York City, good for what's in battleground. We need to help our kids, though, prepare for higher education, so that would be one of the pros.
Jim?
Well, I believe the pros would be, or one of the pros would be that an individual could go from one district to another and still be within the same curriculum. And that would be whether he was going to another district, another state, or even another country. Some of the pros would be, what would we do with the overachievers, the underachievers, and the gifted students? Would we fall behind there in that area? And also, possibly, it would be maybe a financial hardship for the district. Thank you.
Monty, the last question. How do you feel about standards-based grading?
Well, you know, I don't know so much about standard-based grading. I probably should be in them on the school board, but from what I understand on it, the standard-based grading shows parents and students where exactly they are at. And I think that that's a good thing. It's not always that, that they can come in and they can pass a test, there's many other criteria that gets involved in the standard-based grading. And it also helps the teachers know where the students are at so they can change their lesson plans accordingly to the, to the class that they're teaching. Thank you.
Mitch?
You know, this was one of the things that, that just here within the last few weeks that I've started reading about and trying to wrap my arms around it, and it's one of those things that I, that I keep going back and forth. Old school being 0 to 60% is failing, and above that is passing, 90 to 100% is an A, and you're successful. It's, it's, that's what's been ingrained in my, in my mind, and, and that's what colleges are looking at, to see what your grades are. It's not to see if, you know, if you, you fit a certain category or if you need to learn. When I was going to college, any test that I took, if it was A, B, C, D, and those were the straight answers, I did very well. When they started adding E, F, G, H, I, J, that said A and B, all but E, I didn't do so well. But in the, in my long answers, I did very well, and that's what helped me get through college. So there's some bits and pieces of each that are positive and bits and pieces that are negative.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, I don't know a lot about this subject, but I believe that I would have to talk to the teachers and find out, and so they would help me understand which, what they feel would be the best route that we could take. It, it's not an easy process, and it would be quite a change for the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Thank you. I've done a lot of reading on this as well in the last couple of weeks, and from what I can tell, for some subjects this works, and for others, it, it may not. It made me think of when I was in school, and I am a horrible test taker. I get so nervous and I can't remember anything, and I thought, oh, if I could have just written about what I knew on that subject instead of marking A, B, or C because I'm blanking, I might have done better. So I did read that for teaching chemistry, that this was, for some pieces of teaching chemistry, that this worked really well, and then the teacher would switch and use some, another grading system for another module. So I think giving teachers some freedom in choosing what is best for their classroom and working with the principal on that, and maybe setting some standards that are measurable so we could see the results of that. So I guess a little research on our, with our teachers would be good here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I want to thank each of our candidates for coming today and all of you, all of you out there that watched the debate.
I want to thank thecoop.com and Commissioner David Medor for supporting this debate, and remember to vote November 5th.
Thank you.